Okay, why don't we get started with non-agenda item public testimony. I'd like to call up Went Kellogg, Mary Lyupa, Norma Trost-Four, and Nancy Regus.
Hello, my name is Wendy Kellogg. My address is 1197 North Molleton Avenue, Unit E. I'm coming before you as a special ed teacher and as a regional director for the California Association of Resource Specialists, known as CARs. On December 2nd, 1975, President Gerald Ford signed Public Law 94142, now known as the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which ensures a free, appropriate public education for students with disabilities. In the 35 years that have followed, many changes and improvements have been made in the delivery of such services. One thing that remains unchanged is the unique dedication of the educators who undertake designing, modifying, and delivering instruction to students with special needs. These hard-working professionals strive to help their students overcome weaknesses by building on their strengths. They hold high expectations and the belief that their students will attain their highest potential. They educate parents and their general education colleagues, advocating for the best interests of their students. They keep abreast of changes in the law and read up on research and best practices, ensuring that their students have every opportunity to access grade-level curriculum and standards. This summer, the California Legislature voted to set December 3rd as the day to recognize those who serve students with special needs. I am here today to ask that the San Diego Unified School District join the California Legislature and CARs in proclaiming December 3rd as the Day of the Special Educator. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Wendy, I wonder if you could maybe get us some draft language, then we could think about doing a resolution.
Absolutely. I did send an email to the board this afternoon with a sample proclamation with the language in it.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sure that was not for me. I'm Mary Lyupa. I live at 4050 Shimon Avenue, San Diego 92105, and this will be my last report on school libraries. Rather than talk about what I used to do at Kearney, a complex of four schools where I was only there half the time, I brought you some primary source documents and research, since you say you make decisions based on research. First, I have the newly adopted California State Library Standards, along with a document that shows how the library standards align with and support the Common Core standards. Next, I have the National Board Standards for Library/Media Teachers. I brought this because it's the best description that I've found of exactly what it is librarians do. And a few board members and principals seem to think librarians still spend their time shoving books and shushing people. Your job description is one page long; this job description is 45 pages long. If you read this, you'll realize that you can replace some of the resource teachers that you lost due to budget cuts with teacher librarians who are already on your college -- your school campuses. Staff development and teacher in services are just two of the many things that we do. Lastly, I have research studies by Keith Curry-Lance. He's done studies in Colorado, Alaska, Iowa, Pennsylvania, Texas, Oregon, Massachusetts, New Mexico, and even California. His research shows that having a certificated teacher librarian in schools raises student achievement. As you may recall, I'm one of the three National Board certified librarians in the district, and I was the only one working in a secondary library. I say "was" because I am no longer working in a secondary school library. I told you this was my last report on librarians. If you recall, Mary Ansnell told you that teacher librarians all have at least two credentials? Well, since there are no full-time, single-site library jobs available, I've decided to be an excellent music prep time teacher rather than a part-time textbook clerk split between two high schools. So I'm going to leave these documents with you. I'm sorry there is only one copy of each due to budget restrictions, but you can share; you just pretend you're students.
I don't think I want to follow that. Norma Trost, 4416 Coalwood Lane, San Diego 92115. And for the first time in 23 years, I'm actually living in the school district, and I feel like I'm legitimate. President Barrera, Board Members, and Superintendent Koba. The Kiwanis Club of San Diego has supported the district's elementary counseling program for more than 30 years with financial contributions and is advocates for this vital program. While we recognize the severe financial situation in which the district finds itself and acknowledge the difficult decisions you will be making over the next several months, we implore you to consider the needs all students have for access to a comprehensive K-12 counseling program. We know that cuts are inevitable. Elimination of the elementary counseling program is not in students' best interests. Cut if you must, but leave at least a skeleton of a program upon which to build when district finances permit. It's easier to rebuild a program in better times when there is something in place than to have to recreate a program whose history and staff have been completely lost. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Regus, and my address is on file. I'm an in-school counselor at Patrick Henry High School. It is my 13th year at Henry and my 16th year with the district. I'm here because this is an opportunity for me to model for my students what I ask them to do. Sometimes standing for something means standing alone, and being courageous is doing what is right despite being afraid. Honestly, I'm stunned there is a need for me to be here because you are considering taking an action which is the total antithesis of what you declare, that what you do is truly in the best interest of students. I fail to see how cutting 172 counselors and virtually decimating the department serves the students. You see, counselors are the hub of the wheel in education. We carry out the wishes of administration, and we help teachers understand their students better so they have more effective classrooms, and we mediate teacher-student conflicts. We help parents parent and provide cushions for students when home issues carry over into school. And finally, we help students balance the goals the former three parties set for them and mesh them with the students' own dreams and desires. We teach self-advocacy and responsibility. Ultimately, we are advocates for students, guiding and directing them into the difficult journey of growing up from childhood to adulthood. We look at the whole person, not just test scores, to see how they can best reach their potential. We are all born with potential, but many don't actualize it for a variety of reasons. With a divorce rate of 50%, parents losing their jobs, drugs, alcohol, bullying, relationship violence, and sexual harassment rampant, counselors are the one constant in students' lives, which may be their guiding force when making life-altering decisions. In two weeks, many of you will be eating pumpkin pie at Thanksgiving. Did you know that many students take one teaspoon of nutmeg, a delicious spice used in that delectable treat, so they can chill out before school starts to decrease their stress? Then they take another teaspoon when they get home so they can numb themselves to drown out any negativity they may be experiencing. Despite a nation in economic turmoil and people demanding many things from him, President Obama felt it was important enough to make a video acknowledging the harm bullying can do because it is on the rise. Cyberbullying, bully-side, and sexting are words that weren't even in our vocabulary when you and I were in school. My first position with the district was as Resource Coordinator, working with teens and relationship violence. One month after I got the position, Cassandra Stewart, a student in our district, was stabbed to death by her ex-boyfriend. And five months later, Tamara Smith, also a student in our district, was strangled to death and her body set on fire by her ex-boyfriend. I have dealt with relationship violence every year at my site, as one-third of teens have experienced some form of relationship violence. The economy has made it more competitive to get into college. High school seniors experience much stress through the process of college applications. You have decided to raise that bar with A-to-G mandates. It is the counselor who makes sure the student is college-ready and knows what is at stake. I know these things because I am a counselor, and it is my responsibility to know what impacts students in their personal, social, academic, and career domains. The one counselor -- constant, excuse me, is the counselor. If you follow through with making these cuts, you will be penny wise and pound foolish at the expense of the next generation. The students will look around, and their advocate will be gone, the one person who gives a voice to their unspoken needs. We owe students an opportunity to learn in the safest place possible with as much support as possible, and counselors are pivotal in making sure that is achieved. Are you sure you want to take that away?
Debbie Holken, Deborah Hatchell-Carter, Deana Weiss.
Hi, my name is Debbie Holchen. My address is 4631 Van Dyke Avenue, San Diego 92116. And I'm here on behalf -- I am a teacher at Linda Vista Elementary School, a fifth-grade teacher. I've been there 20 years, and I'm here on behalf of our school nurse and our counseling services, our counselor. Linda Vista is kind of a microcosm of the inner city. We experience high gang activity. We experience the effects of broken families, families that a parent is here, a parent is across the border. We experience the effect of undocumented aliens and worrying about trust issues if they can send their child to school. They have no medical services; they have no access to medical services; and they have no access to mental care services. We are an example of a community school. And I know this is the plan. I've been at your meetings; I've heard your -- you know, I've been at the SDA meetings; I'm a member of the SDA board, and I know our plan is a community-school model. We are one; we have been one. These are not just a counselor and a nurse. This is their vocation. This is not just a job. This is what their heart and soul are in. I've been there 20 years; I've seen it. We were the first school to have the ASPIRE grant. Governor Wilson came to us in 1991, and I happen to have been there at that time. And it is -- or no, it wasn't the ASPIRE; it's the ME. I'm sorry; I'm getting my grants mixed up. It was the ME grant, and it is through these programs that we have been able to help the families and bring the needs of these young children, identify them at the young grades K-2, and help them so that they understand their social and their other needs that their parents have. We bring -- we work with the parent and the child and target these students very early on. Our nurse, our nurse takes our -- it takes care of all their medical needs. She takes -- we have a -- she's arranged to have free dental services. She takes them to the dentist. She takes them for glasses. She has members of the community. She is a member of an organization where she gets free care. They come to her. In the morning, there is a line outside her office, all the way beyond our office, of parents and their little children because they can't go anywhere else. So, you know, I say to you, I see the yellow light going, and I know I'm about ready to get cut off, and I'm saying to you, I implore you to look carefully at each individual school and identify what that school, what that school's going to look like, what those families are going to look like when a lack of service, what that will mean to the families that have no other services available to them. Thank you.
My name is Deborah Hatchell-Carter. I'm the principal at Linda Vista Elementary School. My address is -- you have that. Our school's located at 2772 Ulrich Street in the community of Linda Vista. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the community, the parents, the students, the teachers, regarding the impending cuts to elementary school counselors. We have 441 students at our school; 167 of them have not -- did not meet proficiency, and 100 of them are struggling to learn. We are a PI-2 school, 100% free and reduced lunch, predominantly comprised of economically disadvantaged families, ELL learners, special ed, and Hispanic population. Very little mobility. You heard, our teachers have been there; they're devoted; they've been there for 20-plus years. I have only been there for four. Most all of our staff are veterans and devoted, hard-working, committed to the success of our students. Our counselor is committed to the success of our students as well; our nurse as well. It's all about improving achievement. That's what we hear; that's what we do. Due to budget crisis, over the past three years, we've seen our counseling days cut from five to two to one, one and a half, thanks to the ASPIRE or the ME grant, which Linda Vista worked hard with Counseling Department to get for our district. We don't need less counseling days; we need more. Our demographics are such, the due to language barriers, low SES, economic hardships, undocumented families. Our families lack -- our parents, our students lack the access to mental, physical health resources, services needed for their children to learn and to be successful in school. They rely and rely on us to get the support. We are the hub of the community there, and it is through the expertise of our school counselor, Mercedes Santiago, that this happens, as well as our teachers and all of our stakeholders. Our counselor provides the following, too numerous to really mention: positive behavior intervention support program, character ed, parent education, crisis counseling daily, child abuse reporting, fifth grade articulation, student counseling, social motion groups, referrals to outside agencies for support for our families, ME grant, home visits, attendance, SARB, student study team, IEP's 504 behavior management, support for teachers, classroom presentations, anti-violence, anti-bullying, second step programs, peer conflict management mediation. It goes on and on, and we can't be without it. I understand cuts are looming. Accountability hasn't changed for us, so I ask you, I urge you, to please look at the needs of the school when you are looking at having to cut counseling program. We understand the crisis. A-to-G, our mission and our vision, career and college bound, educating the whole child, these are the words in our mission and vision for 2020. It's not going to -- it's not going to happen without the counseling department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Barrera and members of the board. My name is Deana Weiss. My address is 708 Alpine Heights Road, Alpine, California 91901. I've been a school counselor in the Counseling and Guidance Department for the past 10 years. In my role as a school counselor, I am also proud to serve on the district crisis response team. This team is made up of mainly school counselors who have received additional training with the National Incident Management System and the International Critical Incident Stress Foundation in responding to crisis intervention in a systematic way. Under the direction of the Counseling and Guidance Department Administrator, the crisis response team operates in compliance with Administrative Procedure 5135, responding to traumatic incidents at our district schools. By definition, we respond when an incident disrupts the educational programs in place and the emotional stability of students and staff are affected. I have participated on this team for nine years, responding with other team members, volunteering beyond our daily call of duty to provide crisis response services for students, staff, and the community when traumatic incidents occur. From the 2009 to the 2010 and until now, there have been over 25 requests for the crisis response team to respond to and provide counseling services for services to school communities in the aftermath of shootings, death of students and staff, suicides, racial disturbance, child abuse, or natural disaster. This is a vital service that has been extremely beneficial to our district in returning the school community quickly to normalcy once an incident has occurred. I also wanted to share with you all that in addition to the crisis response team members, all school counselors in this district have been NIMS trained, and a major role in their work is responding to crisis at each site on a daily basis. From responding to threats of suicide to counseling victims of bullying, harassment, and child abuse, our school counselors are truly the first responders for our students and staff. We are trained to assess situations, supply immediate action, and to provide supports that maintain a safe and sound academic environment. We also provide responsible -- we are also responsible for completing and following through with district procedures such as the emergency procedure 10. School counselors are instrumental in working with community resources to ensure students' needs are met when the necessity is beyond the scope of our schools. Fortunately, critical incident response is not utilized on a grand scale daily in our school district, but as you know, many crises occurs on a daily basis. If our school counselors are not employed and working at our schools, who will respond to these critical incidents at the site level, at the district level? More important, who will work with our school administrators and staff to educate the community and prevention and education to promote resiliency for when massive incidents or disasters do occur? Thank you, guys.
Okay, Bill Freeman, Francine Maxwell, and Howard Kinchi.
Good evening, President Barrera, Board Members. I'm Bill Freeman. My address is on file. It was about four months since I left the classroom at Porter Elementary. During my years there as a teacher, I vividly recall the value of school site counselors. I want to share one sad incident where a counselor rescued a student of mine. It was when I was a fourth-grade teacher. I had a student, and let's say his name was Joey. Joey was a very good student, very smart, energetic, and well-behaved. One day, he came to school, and he was out of control. He got into a fight on the playground; he threw a book at another student, and yelled in the classroom to the point where I had to send him to the counseling center. As I was writing up his referral statement, I called his mom. I had called her several times during the course of that morning, but she wasn't at home. Joey would not talk to me. On either hand, I sent Joey to the counseling center. About an hour later, I got a call from the school counselor wanting to see me in my first availability. I went to the counseling center about 30 minutes later, and the counselor asked me if I had heard about a guy getting shot when he opened the door of his house last night. You may have recalled that. I told the counselor I heard about it on the morning news, and she told me the man was his stepfather, and Joey had come from the bedroom when he heard the noise. I think you can imagine how the rest of this story went. It's not uncommon for teachers not to be able to communicate with students who have issues of this nature. It really does take special training to pull information from kids. I would have never imagined such a problem and would have sent this child home with the weight of the world on his shoulders. If you can't appreciate the values of counselors after hearing this story, if you can't realize the importance of having counselors at every school site, then you don't understand what it takes for our students to succeed. I want you to know that this is not an isolated situation. I could tell you more of these type incidents that happen to students in San Diego Unified. These are the type incidents that have lasting impacts on adults. It is incumbent upon all of us to ensure that we provide our students with professional counseling necessary to move them forward from such similar incidents. And the only way that I know that we can do that is to ensure that we have counselors at every school site and that we not cut the program. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Francine Maxwell, and my address is on file. I greet you as a community member of a second-largest urban school that's been in program improvement for over 10 years, Morris High School. As we begin this opportunity, I see it as the budgetary issues come, I hope that we pay close attention to some of the activities that are going on at some of our schools. Yes, counselors are extremely important; love counselors. But when you look at certain individual schools and what they've been doing with counselors, I think that there is an opportunity for you to make a difference for children. You take a school like Morris, who's had a head counselor that's never had a -- in the last two years have not had a caseload. That would lead you to believe that you don't need a head counselor at one of the second-largest urban schools. So those opportunities there, to do away with some of the budgetary necessities for that head counselor, which may be absorbed and be able to save the vice principal that is extremely needed, for those teachers that don't know how to control their classrooms because they're online, they're online teachers, as I call them. I call a real teacher that went to college that learns how to have classroom decorum instead of an online teacher because you don't know who was sitting at that computer. Yes, they have their degree, but do you really know who was sitting on that computer to get that online degree? Those type of teachers do not have classroom control. Our budget has been cut for security, so security seems to be in those classrooms a lot because they can't control. Unrestricted allocations, you guys are going to begin those types of dialogues. I've handed you a piece of paper of someone that is getting -- that has been labeled as a project resource grad coach, making 75K. Some of my experienced teachers don't make 75K. I went on the California credentials, and event planning and conference planning is an authorized subject. Cross-cultural language and academic development, and emphasis on home economics. I do believe that we cut out home economics many years ago. So for this board to sit and say that we want to empower schools to make their own decisions, there's a lot of cover-up on some of these schools. So the empowerment that you think that you're handing some of us, it's really called sheltering; it's called protection, because there's not very much shared decision-making. And so maybe as we're moving towards our budget cuts, we can look at schools individually and really do some shared decision-making where community leaders, parents, and students can come in and tell you, please, take that away if you'll save this. Yes, we need a counselor. Lincoln needs Dustin Hawkins. I just had to give my plug; I'm sorry. I love Dustin Hawkins. But if you do away with all counselors, then you're doing a disservice to all the students. So please look closely at some things that we can begin to cut, because there's a lot of fat on some of these campuses. Thank you.
That's good news. My name is Howard Kinchi. I live at 5488 Barclay Avenue, San Diego, and President Barrera, Board Members, Mr. Koba. I'd just like to address the issue of hiring, and I'm not going to try and tell you how to do your job, but we do read the newspaper. And when parents pick up the newspaper and read about what happened with the grand jury in June and misappropriation of ASB funds and PTA funds -- and PTA funds, we get a little warmed up, and maybe some of you do too. And so then the question gets asked, okay, well gee, what happened to those administrators, vice principals, principals that were at those schools where funds were misappropriated? And in one case, I think the total amount was, they were worth $68,000, so you know, we're not talking about chump change there. And basically what happens is three things, okay? Administrators sometimes stay at the site that they were at, where the damage was done, to this day. And then in some cases, they come up here, and maybe they're here for a year or two, sometimes they're here six or seven years until they retire, talking about all the different types of things that occur like this, okay? But they're gone from the site, but they still have a job and a paycheck, okay? And you're all familiar with instances like that. And the third thing that will happen is you'll send them to my child's school. Okay? Okay. And in the interest of being appropriate about the people in this district, I'm going to shift over to talking about what happened in another district on this same subject, because my children, after a great experience K through 8 in this district, a tremendous experience, did 9 through 12 in another district. And it really doesn't matter which district it was, but we saw principals, quote-unquote, rotated in and out of our schools, okay, on numerous occasions. And when those people left the schools for, you know, sort of a quiet disciplinary reason, frequently, they ended up in Director 1, Director 2 jobs at the education center for that district, making administrative wages, and continued throughout the rest of their career. Those are your tax dollars and mine at work, okay? Second instance, we saw people taken off of school sites, spent a couple of years at the ed center, they might be asked, what do you do every day up there? And people would respond, well, I find out when I get there. That sounds like a make-work job to me, okay? And then again, sometimes they'd show up on my children's school site, and you'd say, gee, I hope whatever they ran into in terms of a problem on their previous site got fixed during those two years before they came to be in a place where they're around my kids. Wouldn't you say the same thing, you know? And then the third type of thing that occurs is, well, anyway, point is, the question I really hope that you'll keep in front of you is, when you approve, in your closed session before you come in here, when you approve the various changes, that it'll be number one about kids, and number two about jobs, is that okay? Appreciate it.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, great. No, that's all right, Mr. McCray. Okay, I'd now like to ask the Air Force JRC Color Guard from Scripps Ranch High School to present the colors, please stand.
Colors, hold! Left, hoot!
Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carrying, hut! Hut, hut! Right, hoot!
Thank you, please be seated. I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcasts, and call the November 9, 2010 regular meeting to order with all board members present. If you wish to address the board today, oh, with one board member absent, absolutely, thank you. If you wish to address the board today and your name is not on the blue sheet located at both entrances to the auditorium, and you've not already submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete the form and submit it to Ms. Ward. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of the agenda item. Non-agenda item testimony was heard at 5:00 PM and will also be heard at the end of the meeting. At this time, I'd like the ASB student representatives to the board to introduce themselves. Please tell us about yourself, what's going on at your school, both academically and socially. We'll start with Nancy from Patrick Henry High School.
Thank you. My name is Nancy Sokis, I'm the ASB president and the ASB council president for the district. Currently at Patrick Henry, we have just finished our homecoming week, which was a huge success. We are now planning for our Staff Appreciation Day and upcoming events in December. We are also working with the staff and administration to implement a study hall and advisory period for the upcoming school year, and are working to provide easier access and clearer information regarding novants to students and parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Garrett from Scripps Ranch High.
Hello, my name is Garrett Moore, I'm a senior at Scripps Ranch High, I'm also the ASB president there. I am also the Sergeant in Arms of the President's Council. For Scripps Ranch High School, we finished up homecoming about a month ago, and it was a very successful event for ASB. ASB also continues to work to recognize our students with Student of the Month activities and rewards, as well as Athlete of the Month activities and rewards. Our athletics are doing very, very well. We have girls volleyball in CIF currently, and our football team is winning many games, including last Friday. And our theater department is doing a performance of A Minstern Summer Night's Dream. So we are very, very active with some great activities going on at Scripps Ranch High School.
Thank you, thank you Nancy and Garrett. Good, and now we will have our student presentation. This is from our San Diego High cluster, and we'd like to introduce Dr. Hector Montenegro, the area superintendent.
Thank you very much. We have some very special guests that we'd like to invite down to join you, and basically what this is, is a slice of life in Area 3, the San Diego High Theater Cluster. And the first presenter will be Arturo Ruiz, who is a custodian at Memorial and his family, and also we have Stacy Siders, who is the advisor for the ASB at the high school.
Good afternoon, how you guys doing? I was born and raised in Mexico, Tijuana, Baja California, and I came to the United States back in 80, 81, and I was former Memorial Academy student. And the reason I'm here is, I've worked at Memorial, I've been working for almost 15 years, and the reason I'm here is to support, you know, the school, the teachers, and you know, us like parents, you know, we got a lot of things to support the kids on our side, you know, when they're with us. So you know, I just want to know that, you know, like, the kids, I got four kids, I got my Jose Angel, he attended Memorial Academy, I got Juan Arturo, he's attending Memorial Academy, he's a 6th grader, then we got Alisa, she was a former Memorial Academy, and I got my adult daughter, she's 18, and she's went to Memorial Academy, she was graduate from Memorial Academy, then she went to San Diego High, she graduated from SciTech, and right now she's UC Davis, and I just want to, you know, the reason I'm here is just to, you know, support, you know, the teachers, and a lot of people, you know, they blame the teachers that, you know, they don't do their job, you know, and me like a parent, I don't see it that way, because us like a parent, I think we had to do a lot, you know, to be involved with the kids, our kids, when they're with us. When they go to school, that's the teacher's job. So I just want to, you know, say, you know, that we got good teachers, we got great staff in Memorial, and all the schools, you know, like I said, you know, my kids, they graduated, she's at San Diego High right now, she's at SciTech, and she's doing great. So you know, I think the support we got, you know, from us like parents, has to do a lot with, you know, education or our kids. And the reason I'm here, because I want a good future for my kids, and now my kids, all the kids from the district. I don't know if my kids want to say something for you guys.
My name is Jose Angel Ruiz, I attend Memorial Prep, and I like avid, and I like all my teachers, and I just like that school.
Hi, my name is Elisa Ruiz, I attend SciTech in San Diego High, and after I graduate from high school, I plan on going to college to be an art therapist. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I hope you guys support our schools, you know. Like I said, you know, that school where we at, like they say, it's in the ghetto, but you know what, when my kids were going to that grade level, there was a lot of people told me, do not take them to that school because it's not good. And I just, you know, I show a lot of people that the school is not what it is, that is bad, you know. It still depends, you know, how us like a parents, I say again, you know, are involved with our kids. So you know, just want to say thanks, and you know, thanks for your support.
Thank you, Arturo, thank you.
All right, hi, as you said before, my name is Stacy Siders, and I am the ASB advisor at San Diego High School, and we are very lucky to be here, so thank you for having us, and we are very proud to be representing San Diego High. We did what we could to bring a little bit of San Diego High to you. So we have our blue and white, which is always comes everywhere with us, and as you will see, we have a few posters coming around to you, because we are constantly celebrating the Cavers. So, go Cavers, we are blue and white till we die, it is in our blood, so we wanted to do what we could to bring it to you. ASB at San Diego High, our goal is to provide a comprehensive, multi-dimensional student activity program that strives to meet the diversified needs and interests of all of the students. With a campus of 3,000 students, it is not an easy job. You might be wondering about the caution tape around these students over here. We do have the Caver crazies at our school, is what we call them, and they are our most wild fans, and we need the caution tape a little bit to hold them back, is what we look for, but they came dressed up for you today, and you'll have to forgive our paint and a few things, we're in the middle of homecoming, so we hope you can join us this Friday at our game. And I'm going to turn it over to the students, who brought some pictures for you, to try to hope to bring San Diego High to you. So I will hand it over to David Hadamio, our vice president of San Diego High.
Hello, President Barrera, council members. So, one of the things that we do over at San Diego High School that is a lot of fun is our lunchtime activities. And we do these kinds of things, kind of to lighten up lunchtime, make it fun for the students. So, for example, here we have our Coconut Run activity for our Welcome Back Spirit Week. It was a lot of fun, we have, we got a lot of the students glad because it was very hot during that time, so they had a lot of fun for that. In the next picture, we have a lot of eating contests. This is our senior class president, she's competing against the other classes. And then the next slide is our Tug Award, one of our most popular activities over at San Diego High, and you can see that the staff really gets into it. We try to involve everybody as much as they can. And then this is our Stuff the Toy Car activity, which we try to get as many students in that van as possible, and the record was just set this past week with 53 seniors. So, go seniors, class of 11. So now we're going to turn it over to Karina Velazquez, our ASB president.
Good afternoon, so at San Diego High, we have a lot of different community service activities. Some of them are campus-wide, and we also have some smaller ones that just include our ASB class. And this is a picture of our Yellow Ribbon Week, which we do to raise awareness about suicide, and we give everyone yellow balloons and they make an I wish card. Other activities that we do are the Blood Drive, and we brought some signup slips for you guys, and we invite you guys to come next Tuesday from 8 to 1:30 to our Blood Drive. We have a high goal. We also collaborate with the JRC at our school to collect cans for the food drive, and some other smaller activities that we do just for our ASB class. We team up with the YMCA, and we collect gifts for families in need during the holiday season. So I'd like to turn it over to Leslie Simone, the ASB treasurer.
Hi, one of the things I love most about San Diego High is our diversity. Our San Diego High School complex is 3,000 diverse students, and every year, we host our World Fair, which is where each club, they pick a country to represent, and they sell food and merchandise from that country. Here we have Mexico in our World Fair, it was a big turnout, one of the favorites. As you can see, the whole school goes during our advisory period, and we have many performers. Here's our mariachi, our Veron mariachi band, performing, and it just celebrates our school diversity every year. And now I'd like to turn it over to Alex Fernandez, our ASB commissioner of publicity.
Good afternoon. Here we show how much our teachers and staff members show their spirit towards our school. To the left, we have one of our security members, Lonnie, dressed up as a big mama. And one of our principals to the right, it just, it really goes to show how much spirit these staff members have towards our events, our Spirit Weeks, and so forth. And here is one of our most spirited events, the KUSI pep rally. We had all of our students rise and shine early in the morning, wearing white, white out for that night game. We were just showing our support towards our school and our undefeated run. And there's our football team, showing how much support they have. And here we have, oh, here we have one of our athletic directors, Mr. Guzik. He kindly let the football team shave his head if they had won that night's game, and how wonderfully that turned out. And that just, that just really goes to show how much our staff supports us, and how much fun we actually have during the events in our Spirit Weeks. And I speak for everyone here and at San Diego High when I say thank you very much for having us here.
Thank you. Thank you very much, guys. And the ASB at San Diego High has been so active in the community as well as at the school. You helped us organize one of our town hall meetings, and you had a media event in support of the Dream Act. So these are, these are students who are about getting the school organized, but the community as well. So great work, thank you very much for being here tonight. All right. All right, we will move on. We'll start with our superintendent's information report, Superintendent Kova.
Thank you, President Barrera. First thing I'd like to do is announce our administrative appointments. I have five people, all going to the following position, and that is Administrator, Child Development Center, Early Childhood Education Program, Office of the Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Support Services. And this includes Lisa Alonso, Tammy Cannon, Josephine Condra, Maria Dolores Garcia, and Nancy Noor. Next assignment. Two, Interim General Counsel, Office of the Superintendent, Andra Donovan. Two, Administrator, Business Operations Office, Deputy Superintendent Business, Sharon Fitz. Two, Manager, Budget Development, Finance Division, Office of the Chief Financial Officer, Alexandra Makasognik. And that completes the administrative appointments. I'd like to move on now and... I'd like to move on now and provide the superintendent's information report. Continuing on with the tour of campuses across the district, I had the honor of privilege to accompany Tony Burks and David Lorden, the area superintendents for the Kearney Hoover and Sarah Clusters respectively. Very good experiences ironically going on Halloween and saw the Yellow Brick Road at Central Elementary was the Oz theme there, as well as a lot of good engagement of the kids. Also on, on that date, Monroe Clark Middle School and finally Twain High. And really enjoyed all the tours, all with a nice variation from the elementary kids to the young youth that were doing the credit recovery at Twain. So very positive experience. And then moving forward, the following week stopped at Sarah High School and Hancock Elementary. And among the things noticed in vision math, something that we've been pushing as part of our math task force, was the play, active use of the Promethean boards, moving them from third grade into fourth grade, and also the mainstreaming with special ed children into the classes. So all, those are kind of validation points from the visit. Other things that have occurred, I met with all of the middle school principals, they had their monthly get-together and covered a number of key issues, staffing and budgeting, of course, as they're opening the school year and they're now moving into their third month. We talked about communications and attendance and I think the board received this past week a report that for two consecutive months, September and October, we achieved five-year highs in attendance. And I noted that particularly with talking to the middle school principals, well some other issues. And I've encouraged them to talk with some key central office service providers in the month of November, including HR, finance and information technology. Also this past week, we heard, had a wonderful, I think inspiring discussion with Diane Ravitch that occurred last Wednesday at Madison High and clearly well over 400 educators and friends of education in the room. Ms. Ravitch was, I think, just wide-ranging and very insightful on several topics. And I know that there are a couple of members of the board there as well as administrators and teachers. The following day, we had the privilege of having her also address a body of almost 1,000 folks at the administrators conference, the AXA Annual Leadership Summit. Also past week, another transformation discussion, the first of three, the county superintendent, Dr. Randy Ward and Dr. John Collins, Superintendent of Poway, and their respective staffs, as well as the San Diego Unified Staff are now talking to business community members and general community interest members about what we could be doing in the area of technology, online education, virtual high schools, credit recovery using technology. Had a very good forum with everyone from Bank of America to Intel, with representatives in the room this past week. There's another forum in January and a third one following February. And the idea is to bring the business community in to what we're trying to do, to see how we can partner align and move forward using what we have today in smart classrooms and in the virtual high schools. The last two things I want to bring up is that your resolution on bullying that was brought about last month has been translated into a action plan, into a group that we've brought together of both staff, teachers, principals, program managers such as in counseling special ed, as well as from the community at large. Dr. Dolores Jacobs from the Center, representatives from Anti-Defamation League, trying to understand what in effect do we have for policies or actions today in San Diego Unified? Where are there gaps and overlaps in putting together an integrated policy to preclude harassment, bullying of all kinds on our campuses? And so there's a whole lot more to follow, but it was a very good start to this. And I'll close by saying that Saturday this past, we had our third annual Super Saturday, well over 150 counselors, administrators, teachers coming together to talk about IB and AP programs, the strategies. And I should note, for the third consecutive year, we've had an increase in the number of students in these programs, a very broad-based ethnic representation, completion of courses, completion and credit for the courses, it's all on, on a positive trend, all going upward. And that completes the report for this, this meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you, superintendent. We'll move to board information reports. Mrs. Nakamura.
I'm past Dr. Evans. Yeah, first of all, I want to really express appreciation to all the members of the community who worked so hard on Proposition J. We certainly did not achieve our goal of two-thirds, which is required by law, but it looks like there are probably, when the votes are finally tallied, it will be a majority of the citizens of San Diego really did vote to support public education with their dollars. I think this says a lot about some changes we need to the system in terms of allowing a majority to decide what we want for our schools. But there certainly was a lot of participation by various people in the community. And I especially want to thank President Barrera for all of the work and hours and time that he put into working on this proposition. I think a lot was accomplished even without us getting the money in terms of really uniting the community and realizing the needs that we have for public education here in, in San Diego. And we will continue forward. We do believe in the democratic process, just as the voters weigh in on taxes. We're also fortunate in San Diego that voters elect a school board and the, the school board members are accountable to the voters and we need to take this into consideration now and the future as we work together to solve a lot of these problems. This morning, I was very happy to be at a workshop with our academic team, talking about goals for student achievement. And the San Diego District is really taking a big step forward and going way beyond the simple measures by the state, what we call the CST and other scores, which we use to rate our schools. We're looking at a broad range of curriculum, not just measuring reading and writing and mathematics and science, but also the arts and physical education. But particularly the focus this morning was on critical thinking, that we really want thinking citizens, not just people who can fill in bubbles. So I think it's going to be very exciting what we're doing for education here in San Diego. I think a lot of this is also articulated in our Vision 2020 and in our community-based school reform. We have to be realistic though, when we, when we are facing such massive budget shortfalls. We have a lot of goals, we're not going to be able to achieve all of them if we don't have the right amount of funds to do that. We'll do the very best with what we have and we will need to continue to activate for our state government to keep public education as its number one priority. And I'm hopeful that with a new governor, we can kind of come back to the priority. The voters voted several years ago with Proposition 98 to make education the number one priority of our, of our state government and I hope we can return to that standard very soon.
Thanks. Let's turn it back.
Yeah, well, I want to thank those people that called me and gave me condolences about losing. Actually, it's a really high point in my life because I have my life back. And, you know, while a little bit of, of, you know, pride sometimes get damaged by things like that, I think in the long run, I'm going to be a happier person in the, in the coming months. I don't really think I envy any of you with the problems you're going to face. I really don't. And later I'll have some comments about, I think, mistakes that you have and are making and probably will be around to point those out even in the coming months. But one troubling matter to me is how slow, and there was a gentleman that spoke earlier that I think, I really have to say, I, I, I think you hit the head, nail on the head. There seems to be a lot of protectionism in the school system. It's a, you know, while I, you know, I am proud of the district and I think that we've done a lot of things with a lot less funds than we should have had from other sources. I think we have not paid attention to, I'll call it, the honesty of our staff, the honesty of our staff. And this gentleman said something about consequences and I think he was right. And one of the things that I, that came to my attention is that we have been, I think the justice wheels will be very slow on this, but we have evidence that there have been members of our staff that have changed grades, which is prohibited under the ed code. And basically, as far as I can determine, no consequences yet. Well, I, I really worry about things like that. When I have, you know, the pride I have in public education, I was a counselor, we knew better than to change grades. I think that when we have staff that encourages that kind of thing in order to help, they'll look better. I think that's a very bad practice and I hope to follow this and see that there is some kind of consequence. Because being dishonest is not something we need to model for kids. So, we'll, we'll watch the evaluations of the schools, we'll watch the performance of staffs, even though we aren't sitting up here, we're still going to be paying attention and I hope, and I want to thank those folks that did say they have watched me with some kind of integrity for the last 20 years. And, and I hope to be around to, you know, say what I've been saying with a little less worry about whether I get elected or not. Thank you all.
Just a, a couple of quick things. Again, I echo Dr. Evans' comments. First of all, thanking everybody who worked so hard on the, on the Prop J campaign. Also, Dr. Meyer, just you and the goals for student achievement task force was just an inspiring conversation this morning. And, and if folks get a chance to go and check out the work that's being done at Joiner and Torrey Pines Elementary Schools, we've got so many schools that are doing such great things, but two schools today that, that were able to demonstrate through, in, in the case of Joiner, essays written by students, the degree to which their students are developing as critical thinkers. It was just really, really something, something to appreciate. We've got some visiting folks from Russia in town who I don't think are here tonight, but we've got an exchange program with Perkins K-8 school. The principal of Perkins, Fernando Hernandez, established an exchange a couple of years ago. Fernando is himself fluent in, in Russian language and he brought a, a group of students from Perkins Elementary last year over to Russia for a week and it was an amazing, it was amazing to hear the students talk about that experience. And we've got some visiting teachers from, from Russia that are here right now, so I'd like to welcome them to, to San Diego. I'd like to also recognize the, a few schools, the entire district, as the superintendent pointed out, is emphasizing and improving attendance and, you know, how important increased attendance is for both student achievement and for helping us with our, with our budget crisis. In Area 3 in the, in the San Diego High Cluster, I know that the, that the schools are paying a lot of attention to this and Hector Montenegro shared with me today how just about every school for the second month in a row has had positive attendance increases over last year. And in particular, I wanted to point out three schools that have done a great job this last month, and that would be Sherman Elementary, Bernie Elementary and San Diego High School, School of Communications, just done an amazing job improving their attendance over, over last year. So I'd like to thank them for doing that and again acknowledge San Diego High School and I know it's Homecoming Week and it was great to have the students here and have the memorial students here as well. So, great. So can we get a motion to adopt the agenda?
One second.
Do you want to vote, Mr. DeBatt?
Sure.
All right. Okay, we'll move on to item E1, which is the blueprint to accelerate the achievement of African-American and African students. Superintendent Koba.
Thank you, President Barrera. This is a request recommendation to the board that we approve in concept, the San Diego County Association African-American Educators Blueprint to Accelerate Achievement of African-American and African Students. If you recall, this was presented as a report back in May and we were provided guidance from the Board of Trustees to go forward to work with the AAAE and other community members. We have in fact had three sessions, we've gotten together in September and October, have built task force around the key components of the blueprint. That includes looking at areas of policies and procedures, the graduation rate, gender specific needs and parent and family support. Very nice representation from the community, from the staff, from program managers and from campus and central office. So it's a nice diverse group. The purpose tonight is just to recognize and to bring greater leverage to the fact that we are working on this. We have the task force fully operable right now and we'll be going forward well into the calendar year before we come back to the board. And the idea is to present the board with the recommendations going down through each of the four focal areas and based on compliance or agreement with, if it's federal mandates, California Code of Education, district policy, collective bargaining, within the context of everything that helps to shape in authoritative way our recommendations to the board sometime in the first part of the calendar year. But this point right now is just to bring it front center, give it the visibility it needs and ask for you to approve in concept, back to you later with recommendations within the compliance requirements that we need to consider.
Great, and we've got two speakers on this item, Shirley Weber and Wendell Bass.
Dr. Shirley Weber and you have, everybody has my address, I believe, but Executive Director of the Association of African-American Educators. And we're not going to really do a presentation today, we're just here if you want to ask us any questions. Want to thank the superintendent and the district staff for working with us. We've been working on a number of things, but we felt it was important that we had, that we bring it back to the board because even though you saw it, you really didn't say, okay, this is something we think is important and we approve it in concept, that it can be a part of the district. Because people felt like we'll work on all this stuff and then come back and maybe the district says, no, we don't want to participate or be a partner in this. And so in a formal sense, we felt it was important to bring it back, that you approve it in concept. And as we develop various programs or initiatives or whatever might be there, those things would come back, as he said, and filter through the normal process that exists for the district. We're very excited about it, very serious about this particular effort and those who've been participating from the community and the various agencies that are working on the, on the actual task force are very serious about the initiatives. We believe very strongly that we will make progress despite whatever budget challenges might exist. We believe very strongly that when we had money, we didn't do anything. So if we don't have money, you know, we can probably do as well as we did with money, but surely better. And so as a result, we're very committed to making this happen. And I do not envy you guys' task at all in the next few months. There are moments when I'm truly happy I'm not on the board and this is one of those. But nonetheless, I have confidence you'll do the right thing. So I, I don't know if Wendell has anything to say concerning the initiative, but basically we're here to answer questions if you have any.
You want to speak, Wendell?
Yeah, I'm going to bless you. I have nothing to say.
Okay.
Any more than, you know, just, we would appreciate your approval.
Yeah.
And I think it shows, it would show then that you're truly committed to making the differences. One thing to celebrate it, oh, it looks good, it sounds good and all of that, but, you know, when I look at budgets or when I look at my schools, I always say I can determine what a school believes in because it's based on what they spend their money on. All the other doesn't matter. So this is, I think, one of these kinds of things where if we're committed, we're going to state upfront, we fully support it. And then that gives then everybody else buy-in in terms of participation and that this is serious. So we appreciate your support, we appreciate the superintendent and deputy superintendent, senior leadership, all that have been involved. It's been a, a great experience so far, had very honest and open discussion. Sometimes some of the discussion scared, scared some folks, but that's just the way it is. But it's always driven towards what are we going to do in the best interest of our children?
Yeah.
Because at the end of the day, that's what we're responsible for. So your support would be greatly appreciated.
Right, and we appreciate your hard work in, in getting the task force organized and bringing it forward. Can I ask for a motion to approve the recommendation in a second? Okay, and Dr. Evans, do you want to come?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very happy to hear that there's been this great collaboration between district staff and, and your committee, the task force, in terms of moving forward. I want to make sure that we're not just doing this in a, in a feel-good, you know, mom and apple pie sort of way, saying, oh, that's nice and just kind of going on and not doing anything. And I know that you're very, very aware of the, the financial limitations, you know, when we have a whole group of counselors right here who are absolutely needed and there's certainly nobody that disagrees, we need those counselors and yet, you know, they are facing pressure under the budget. So I just want to make- So I just want to make sure that we understand that there's a commitment on the part of the board to really address these issues and to do whatever we can within the resources that we have. And for example, I mean, there's an Association of African American Educators Academy, and it talks about funding it annually in July of, well, it says July and it says annually, beginning 2010. I just want to make sure that we're clear on what these types of things mean, because I'm not aware of any funding that's available at this point, with 2010 almost being over for that specific project. I just don't want to just pay lip service to, you know, this is a great thing.
We don't, we don't, none of us on the task force have time to waste, and we've made that very clear. Many of those are suggestions, as we talk about the academy, particularly because that deals with issues of staff development that the district has. We've already talked with the superintendent about our annual conference and how we need to try to fold in activities that the district already engages in, in terms of staff development, to make sure that we're aligning ourselves with it, to maximize what we do with the district so that we can have an impact on it. You know, and I think when we get down to the real discussions, we will get into the difficult pieces, is where do we find the resources to accomplish these things? We just refuse as a community to allow what has happened for the last umpteen years to continue. And so we believe very strongly that we can do this, that the district can do it. We know there are limited resources, there always has been limited resources, but we also know that resources have never been the issue at hand. It has never been about money. And we can see that in what we fund, in good times and in bad times. It has never been about the dollars.
Great, thank you. And I do believe that this is the epitome of what we really want to do in terms of community involvement, that I think that the fact that it is coming from the community, that you're coming to the board and the district and making these proposals, as opposed to someone sitting up here in an office and saying, well, we think this is what this community needs and that community needs, I think you're going, we're going about in the absolute right way. So I really appreciate what you're doing.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second to approve moving forward in concept.
We'll just wait for you to vote, Mr. Pereira.
We're done. All right, great, thank you, thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Can we get a quick motion to excuse Board Member Jackson from tonight's meeting?
Please vote.
Please vote. Okay, and I wonder if we could get one motion to approve our board consent agenda.
Please vote. Second, third.
Okay, now, on to Item G1. So this is our proposed policy on recruiting activities in the district as a first reading. Mr. DeBeck?
Sure. Well, this is a culmination of a number of years of discussion. I think it represents, I'm not going to go through the whole thing, policy by policy item, but basically what it does is it gives a level playing field to people that want to influence students about moving in their direction, like the military and colleges, and sets what I think are really important constraints on their behavior if they misbehave. And it's the first time in the time I've been on the board, we had policies around this along the way, but at least this time it's got something that says, you know, if you break the rules, you don't get to come back. And I think that's pretty clear, and it's fair. So while, you know, I think there may be details that some folks would have some concerns about, I honestly believe it's a very fair presentation, and I think we should support it.
Okay, we've got a number of public speakers. I'll call up Martha Lucan, Elena Arias, Alicia Leon.
I would like to say that, well, I like to start by saying that I am for this policy.
Your name.
Oh, my name is Martha Lucan.
Hi, Martha.
And I'm for this, I'm not against it, there was a mistake.
Yeah.
And I live in 4869 Federal Boulevard, I'm a junior in Mission Bay High School. I plan to attend a four-year university. And as a freshman, I really didn't pay attention to the military recruiters until the point where I was told that to learn about college, we needed to get a pass from a teacher and, like, sign up and go to, like, the library or some little office thingy. And I thought it wasn't fair. You see, I saw the military recruiters out there with music, and they would bring prizes and little cards where people would sign their names and information, and I really didn't think that that was equal. Because our school is to be focused on getting us to college, getting us to university. And to see that military recruiters are in our high school, like, it's sad to think that one day, you know, your friend might go off to war instead of getting the career he wanted, because here we have the military recruiters, like, persuading you, calling you as soon as they get your information, going to your house, invading your privacy, and I just want fairness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mi nombre es Elena Arias. Tengo una hija en la preparatoria de Mission Bay. La razón por la que estoy aquí es para pedirles que regulen la presencia de los reclutadores militares en las escuelas de nuestro distrito. No estoy de acuerdo con la manera en que los reclutores vienen a las escuelas, llegan a cualquier hora y distraen a los estudiantes inclusive cuando están en clase. También les ofrecen regalos, se le hacen promesas que muchas veces son mentiras. Y de todo esto nosotros, los padres de familia, no sabemos nada hasta que lo empiezan a contactar. Personalmente, o hasta que los reclutores vienen a nuestras propias casas sin ser invitados y tratan de reclutar a nuestros hijos e hijas en las fuerzas armadas. De todo esto, no nos piden consentimiento a los padres, y como no estamos bien informados hasta nosotros caemos en este engaño. Firmamos documentos que nos hacen sentir que tenemos que firmar cuando en realidad no es así. Miembros de la junta educativa escolar del distrito, les pedimos que las visitas de los reclutadores estén claramente reguladas. Y al mismo tiempo queremos que en su lugar todas las escuelas del distrito ofrezcan todos los cursos que son necesarios, no solo para graduarse sino para poder entrar al sistema universitario del estado. Mi sueño como el de todas las madres de nuestra comunidad es ver a nuestros hijas e hijos ir y graduarse de la universidad. Gracias por escucharme.
Good evening, I will be interpreting. Hello, everyone, my name is Elena Arias. I have a daughter at Mission Bay High School. The reason why I'm here is to ask you to regulate the presence of military recruiting in the school district. I don't agree with the way the military recruiters come to school. They come to our school at whatever time and distract the students, mostly in classes. They offer gifts and make promises to them which are mostly lies. And us parents don't know about this until they either call, or worst of all, intrude in our own homes without invitation and try to recruit our children to the military. Overall, they don't ask for our consent, even as parents, and we are not informed until our students fall into this trap and sign documents and make us feel that we have to sign even though they don't ask us to do it. Members of the San Diego School District, we beg of you that the military come to the school a little less often. At the same time, we wish that instead of military visits, we see students from universities that offer information on courses, not only to go to the university, but to get accepted into state universities. My dream is the same as all mothers in our community, is to see our children go to university and graduate from university. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Lisa Leon. I live in 5905 Guerrero Street, San Diego, California 92114. And I'm a junior at Mission Bay High School, currently enrolled in the International Bachelor Program. I have always had the dream of attending a four-year university, possibly a UC or even an Ivy League school, to pursue a major in psychology or law. And I'd use my skills to help those in need of mental aid or those who find themselves victims of injustice. But how can I or we as students focus on the many options we should have for our future if our own school does not offer them in a balanced manner? These options that are definitely presented in other schools of the district. I do not mind recruiting for military in our school, but it does concern me that while army recruiters create large performances attracting the majority of my peers, college recruiters are rarely if not ever seen on our school grounds. Before junior year, I hadn't noticed, I hadn't once noticed a college recruitment display until Avid, which is a class I received through my IB program. But what about the students who don't take a college prep class? All I want is equal access to the paths our lives are able to take without having to worry about being restricted and pushed into one direction. And if all San Diego, and if all San Diego students will graduate to succeed in our choice of college and career, as your mission statement says we will do, then it is only right to allow this policy to pass. We will greatly appreciate this approval, letting us freely decide as best as possible what is right for our future. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Hoon Tang, Dahlia Trujillo, Sakina Shabazz, and Consolom Manriquez.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Hoon Tang, new, the Field Director for ACLU of San Diego and Imperial Counties. Our address is PO Box 87131992138. I'm here to speak in support of the policy on recruiting activities. This policy is about protecting student privacy and establishing guidelines and equal access for all recruiters. The policy will safeguard student private information collected during the administration of the ASVAB test. In front of you, you see a copy of the ASVAB test, and you'll see that it asks for confidential student information, including social security, gender, race, ethnicity, date of birth, statement of future plans, and test results. An action in part of schools causes the U.S. Military Entrance Processing Command to automatically select Option 1, which allows the test results and private student information to be released to military recruiters without prior consent. This policy mandates that school choose, that the schools choose Option 8, so that student's private information will not be automatically released to recruiters. Adopting this policy will eliminate inconsistencies and align the district with the Family Educational Rights Protection Act and Section 9528 of the No Child Left Behind. Simply put, this policy prevents all recruiters, civilian and military, from exercising unfettered access to schools. We encourage you to adopt the policy on recruiting activities to protect student privacy and to establish guidelines and equal access for all recruiters. Thank you.
My name is Dahlia Trujillo, and I am here to request the approval of the policy that will regulate the presence of military recruiters in our school. At my school, there has been a numerous amount of army recruiters. On one occasion, army recruiters were offering students another form of identification in order to ride a jet plane simulator. Everyone was getting one, because in order to do so, all you had to do was give your basic information. But the last question was, would you like us to send you information about the army? Most people said no. I was one of those people. Everyone got to ride the simulator, but about a week later, the same people that said they didn't want to receive information did. If they're going to come, they should at least respect their wishes of not receiving their information. If the district wants us to succeed, like they say they do, then college recruiters should come to schools as well as military recruiters. I'm not asking for the complete absence of recruiters, but merely the regulation of their visits and equal access to them. Thank you.
Hello, School Board, my name is Sakina Shabazz. I'm a senior at Lincoln High School, and my address is 4840 Market Street, Department 6, San Diego, California 92102. And I'm up here in support of this policy, because at my high school, within the past month, the army has came, the Navy has came, and the Marines have came. And I was told that, you know, this is nationally, November is the college application process, but I'm seeing more military recruitment than college recruitment. And this time is very important, particularly for seniors, because this is a time when they're applying to college and getting more knowledge about their opportunities after they graduate from high school. But it's really bothering when I walk into the center quad and I see Marines there playing music and entertaining a lot of students while a lot of us students have to go out of our way to get college information. And there has not been one college fair on my campus this year. I think for the span that I've been in high school, I've only seen one on my campus. And if we do decide to go to a college fair, it's either at the Scottish Rights Center or something that we have to do ourselves. So in support of this policy, I'm asking that the recruitment to students, whether about post-educational opportunities, just balance it out with military recruitment and with college recruitment, because I'm acknowledging that a lot of students do want to do the military after they graduate from high school, but if you're only being provided with one-sided information, particularly from the military, it's weighing our decisions what we want to do after high school. So in support of this policy, just balance it out. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Consolom Manriquez. I am currently a principal at San Diego High School of the Arts. I've been in this district, you have my address. I get a paycheck every month. I am, I've been in this district since 1993. I've served as a teacher, as a resource teacher, as a vice principal and now a principal. And I think all the students said it so great, I mean, even the parent. I've lived through this. I lived through many years of seeing the military recruiters, even in the junior high. And I've seen them now in our high school in football, in our football games. And again, I agree with the students that's saying, why don't we have the college recruiters as well? And it's, I support this policy as to have equal access, because I've heard the stories of, like, the mother that was up here, where I have to be a translator to the recruiter and say, you got to stop calling, and yes, she, they regret for what they did. And so there's, there's all this information that comes to our parents, and it's no surprise that majority of the people that are up here are people of color, either Latinos or Blacks. And unfortunately, I'm sorry that you have not had a college fair in your school, but again, we are at San Diego High, trying to really have options open for our students and have equal access for recruiters and regulating this. I, I mean, thank you for bringing this up, and hopefully this will be passed for the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Can I just ask, maybe Andrea is a point of order, so this is listed as a first reading tonight, can we actually take action on this item tonight? No?
No.
No?
Okay. I do want to have another comment, because the document that we were giving on the ASVAB is troubling. You know, while I use ASVAB data for counseling purposes, I don't like the statements that are showing on the document. And, you know, if we're going to bring it back, then I think we need to have some kind of policy statement around what I believe are the inaccurate statements on the ASVAB form itself. It says on the document that the principal purpose is to compute and furnish test or products for career vocational guidance, and group assessment of aptitude test performance for up to two years to establish eligibility for enlistment. And then it says only for students that are 11th grade or higher. And then it says some really interesting stuff, like for marketing evaluation, marketing of the military, and assessment of manpower trends. I don't think that's going to go for the kids, but, and characteristic, and for related statistical studies and reports, all kind of camouflaged statement for, we got the data, now we get to use it any way we want to. Okay? I understand that statement, and I see all the loopholes in it, but then, when you get down to the bottom, you really get the zinger. Disclosure. Voluntary. However you do not provide the requested information, that's all the data, like your social security, your address, and a whole bunch of other stuff, your test will not be scored or otherwise processed. In other words, if you sat down and you wanted to take the test and get the information, the only way you could
the only way you could get the information is to give out your private information and let them do with it as they wish. As a policy, I don't think I agree. And so I don't mind the ASVAB being used if it's guaranteed information for the counselor and the kid, but what I don't like is that you have to give the data out about the kid in order to have the test processed. And if their staff's gonna come back with a recommendation on the consequences or on the privacy issues, I think we ought to take a stand on this part alone. You know, I, I can't see, yeah, it's got a signature and a date, and it's basically saying, you know, I agree to everything they said, but nothing to do with our policy. So I'm not real comfortable with that giving out of private information on, on the guise of providing vocational career information when that student doesn't have the right to withhold their information in the first place. And so, you know, I understand our policy, and I think this, actually, I honestly believe this, this ASVAB document is absolutely in violation of the policy on its face. And so, you know, the truth is, from my point of view, is I think the military has a great deal to offer to kids who want to have support for their scholarships in the future. And there's things like that that go on. But what I don't like is the idea of deceptive marketing strategies on the part of the military while they get that information. So, I won't be around probably when this finally comes down, although I will be here on the 30th. I'd sure like to see us take a stand on the privacy part. And I suggest that staff do that and that the board support it.
Mr. Kova, do we have anyone present that can tell us how this is, this information is gathered and how it's used? I believe it's at the students' request only. This isn't given to all of our students.
Mrs. Nakamura, I don't know.
Because I'm concerned about how it's being represented. It'd be nice to have some better information about how this is used.
Sure.
My understanding is that it's actually the, the students' request, and it's, they've already expressed an interest in this career path. So, you know, that's, I just don't like making decisions in a vacuum.
We'll have to come back to the board with confirmation.
Well, my data is 20 years old, but I used to be a counselor, and I used this data, and it was used exactly as I described. And so while I don't have current practice information, I think that basically the kids can tell you that once they take the test, they're gonna hear about it. And if that's the case, then I don't need anybody else to validate it. The kids are talking for themselves.
But if the kids have already decided that that's a career path they want to select and choose...
Well, ask somebody else then. But I mean, the point I'm getting at is if you ask the students if they want this information to be given out on a condition of taking the test, I bet you I know what their answer will be.
We can certainly look into the details of how it is done, but typically, and we can talk to the students, it depends on the school. Students are brought in according to one grade level, so perhaps seniors or 10th graders, depending on a testing schedule, and they are given it without necessarily asking for their specific interest in the military. And the information is used because it gives you career aptitudes, as Mr. DeBeck has stated. It'll come out with the top three possible careers that you might be well-suited for, given some of the attributes of the test.
Well, the military will use it to help classify kids on whether they want to go to auto mechanics or in electricity or in communication skills and all that. And we also, as counselors, use that same information as a part of the program when we talk to a kid. Well, yeah, you might want to go to advanced studies in this particular thing. So there's, there's information here that's valuable to every counselor and every student. The question is, what's the price?
And we can look into more detail to give you specific information of how it is currently in use.
The military doesn't honor that anyway. They put you in the infantry or anywhere they want you to be.
Well, I understand that fully, but I mean, they, they have that, they claim that's their ability. And, you know, yeah, in the military, you get, once you sign that paper, you're theirs. And so it doesn't matter exactly what your attitude is from that point on. It's either that or a court martial.
So, so, Mr. DeBeck, I just want to understand, are you looking for, in addition to the proposed policy tonight?
Absolutely. I want, I want a ruling or a policy statement around ASVAB.
Okay. So we'll, we'll look for the staff to come back to us with that. Okay, great. Oh, yeah, Dr. Evans.
Yeah. First of all, I want to thank Mr. DeBeck for bringing this forward. Actually, one of the first meetings I was on the board, there was a similar topic and a similar group of students was here advocating for it at that time. And I, I think it's really great that we're dealing with students who had a real experience, who know what's been going on at their school and, and are speaking up about it. And I also appreciate the fact that, having looked it over, that the policy has been drafted very carefully. It's not slanted. It really is, as some of the signs say, for, for balanced recruiting. And, and balanced recruiting would mean not coercing information out of people at the same time offering, and I do believe that the schools do need to be open to all options after graduation, including the military, as well as colleges and many other things. But I think what's good about this policy is it deal, it covers all types of recruiting. We've been hearing a lot lately in terms of different recruiting methods of for-profit colleges and how people are induced into signing big loan agreements to go to these very expensive schools. And I think that's just another example where we need to be, to be very careful that people are fully informed. And, and then as far as the other item that Mr. DeBeck was bringing up, I think that's an additional issue beyond the recruitment issue, but it is a privacy issue, is the military offering the ASVAB to the schools as a service that is being provided to them, which also includes those who want to participate or are interested in the military, that they can provide their information, but that they're also providing an opportunity, the way Mr. DeBeck used it in the past, to help counsel other students on some sort of vocational aptitude types of things? Or is it only going to be limited to just those who, who say they're interested in the military and willing to give up their information? So I think that really needs to be clarified, because otherwise it does go counter, even to the policy that we're adopting, if we're giving this test out in, in large numbers in the schools. At the same time, it's invalidated the moment you don't sign to give over your information. So I appreciate the students who've come out and speak about this today.
Yeah, so this is, on the agenda is the first reading tonight. I wish we could actually vote and support this item tonight. So we'll ask you to come out again when we take this item up on November 30th. But I agree with Dr. Evans. I just want to thank the students from Lincoln High School and Mission Bay High School, and you probably have students from other schools, but you've been so active in helping us make positive change in the past. Okay, we'll move on to item H1. So this is our monthly HR and finance update.
I'm gonna ask Phil to take over on this one.
Hey, good evening. The, the reports for budget and finance for September and October will be presented at the, the last meeting in November for this particular month. And Sandra Huaso is here to discuss the HR reports. I'm with you, so we will be doing those tonight.
Good evening, President Barrera, Board members, Superintendent Kova. On a monthly basis, Human Resources will be providing information regarding the demographics of our workforce, in addition to any other personnel-related items, just to provide you the information. In terms of the first graph that we have for you, we are taking a look at providing you with how many monthly salaried employees we have on any given year. We are actually providing you with information over the course of several years. And this will help us kind of track any of our trends. Currently, we have 14,725 monthly salaried employees across all areas, both certificated and classified. And you can take a look at what the trend has been over the past several years. Now, when you take a look at the actual hiring that has happened between July 1st and October 31st, that would be the second slide. What we have done is we have broken it out by the different bargaining units, so that you're able to see how much hiring has happened. Cheryl, can you sit? That would be the newly hired salaried by bargaining unit. This will also let you see month to month what the hiring has been. Now, for most of the bargaining units, what we have done is we have continued to hire based on approval of filling any funded budgeted position that is considered to be of critical needs. The hiring that you see happening in the SDA bargaining unit, these are positions that include mostly of your special ed categories, that would include your moderate and severe credential teachers, adaptive PE, speech-language pathologist, school psychologist, and your math and science candidates as well. What you can anticipate to see during the next update is probably a bit of an increase as we continue to finalize the hiring of any employee in a budgeted position for the month of October and November. Now, in terms of the other categories, you could see how it has been across all of the other bargaining units. And the last slide that we have for you is where the placement of excess teachers occurred. You may recall, at the end of the '09, '10 school year, we ended up to close to 322 teachers that were in need of placement. And you, these are excess due to perhaps changes in the allocation, changes in the curricular needs at the school site, that perhaps they were offering a program that needed to be changed. So that might mean different teachers with different credentials, and therefore that might have given them excess status. It is important to note that most of these teachers, of course, are doing their jobs. These are not transfers due to any kind of discipline or performance issues. This is strictly trying to balance out the staffing, where the allocations are. Now, in terms of where the final placements occur, it's across different categories. As allocations were being firmed up, some sites that were anticipating excess teachers were able to cancel that status and have staff actually remain on-site. You also had teachers that were able to receive placements through the transfer process of post and bid. You also had placements that occurred in known vacancies that were continued to materialize through the months of July and August. And then certainly, growth positions that were identified once students reported to school. And you also had over-formula teachers that were approved. So through all of these positions, we were able to place most of the reassigned teachers based on the last report that you just see last Thursday, there's at least 14.7 FTE. They are currently working at school sites, however, do note that these are, for all intents and purposes, unfunded positions. But certainly, the employees are currently working at the school site. With that, that concludes this presentation. If there are any questions?
Yeah. Okay. So, right now, how many teachers are employed but not assigned?
We have 14.7 FTE.
14?
But 14.7, based on our calculation. And they're basically currently assigned at a school site, but they are considered to be unbudgeted.
Well, I understand that. But so you're saying that out of all this, we ended up with only 14 teachers that we couldn't find a place for because their credentials were the wrong credentials for the jobs they have? Or are you saying that you have teachers out there that you've placed with or without, you know, like emergency credentials or whatever, in order to get the, to keep them employed? Because the data is different than what I imagined, okay? You know, I got it, something like we hired 150 new teachers. That means that those teachers were, had to be hired because we didn't have people to put in those jobs because they didn't hold the credentials. So then if we hired 150, then that must have been 150 people that we had retained that didn't have the right credential for the job, or else we wouldn't have had that to hire. So then that means to me that the number that you're telling me about 17 is something wrong with that.
The hiring that did occur, which is the number that you're pointing out, was very specific to subject areas that we needed year to year. And you might have seen that same number or similar numbers when it came to the release of temporary employees. We had employees in that category, so they're not necessarily brand-new to our district, but they could be rehires. In terms of what, the reason we were able to place teachers is because basically the, the conditions of the positions remained the same. There was no elimination of program, there wasn't any change to the staffing allocation. So the conditions of being able to place people were there. However, in terms of these 14 people, we have placed them in school sites that are within the credential areas. However, again, it's the issue that they're considered to be in excess because they remained in unfunded situations.
Oh, yeah, but it does just reduce class size, but only in the credential areas that they have. So that you can't say, well, you're doing a class reduction in English because these might be Spanish teachers.
Correct.
Okay. All right, but, but the number is not exactly what I had heard, so I'll have to just, you know, verify whether I got accurate information from other places. But for every one of the teachers that we haven't, that we have that don't have formula jobs, which you call an extra expense, it's, it's around $70,000 a teacher. So when we're talking about what's gonna happen in, as we start cutting programs or we start looking at, you know, school police or whatever, we're gonna have to find that money somewhere else, multiply that, you know, that mismatch some way. Because it can't continue, it just can't. You know, if it's 14 times 70, that's, you know, quite a bit of money. If it's 300 times 70, it's even worse. So I, I'm not sure that I am sure of the numbers you're telling me, but we'll find that out as we look at the enrollment at the schools and the number of kids that are in each of these classrooms, which will end up being reported eventually.
One of the things that, at last Thursday presentation, there was a slide that certainly these positions are hitting the end imbalance. They, these are positions along with what employees may be in different positions regards to pending personnel action, different situations of why they would not be at a school site. So there was that information provided, I believe, last Thursday, when we were looking at all of those staffing situations that could end up impacting the end imbalance because they are not funded currently.
And that's only 15 to 17 in that range?
In terms of what we call excess staff. But there were other categories that were within what was represented to you that is also impacting end imbalance.
I'm aware of that. Okay.
Okay, I mean, that, that certainly is a pretty small number when you're looking at 7,000 teachers in the district and talking about 14.7 teachers. I believe you've probably given us these numbers before, but we kind of went, I've seen different things, and I know it changes during the first month or two of school, but, you know, it would be good to look at, you know, we had X number of teachers last year, we had this number who resigned, or retired, went out on leave, and then we released this number of temporary teachers. Obviously, some of the temporary teachers were brought back because of credentialing issues, but it's, and I know you have to do a lot of predicting about how many kids are gonna be in each school and each class, but it seems like it's come out amazingly close in terms of ending up with 14.7 at that point. I have a question back on the, the first chart, which is the total active salary employee counts by school year. I'm assuming on this, that the, when it says the school year, for example, it says 2008, I'm assuming that's the 2008, 2009 school year.
Correct. And it starts July 1st through June 30th. So, for example, it would pick up any hiring that happens during the summer months, but technically, folks could be starting at the beginning of the school year.
Right. So basically, how many at the beginning of two, of September of 2000, or, beginning of 2008, July, right? This is how many teachers we would have. But, and I, and certainly, it's gone, you know, from 2004 to 2010, from 9,061 to 7,585 teachers, that's, excuse me, about a sixth less, fewer teachers than we had. But what surprises me is from 2008 to 2009, because we had so many early retirements, and yet the numbers between the two years are almost identical.
When it came to the early retirement, most of the effective dates on, on those separations were July 1st, so you would see them reflected on the '09 school year. So the early incentive was offered '08, '09, but the actual recording of... So the early incentive was offered '08, '09, but the actual recording of the action, you would see that reflected on the following year, just because of the effective date of the separation.
Okay, so there was a delay on that because we, so we went from 8,500 down to 7,500 over those two years, a lot of which were those early retirements then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you know, you look at this chart, which is up there, and you look at our enrollment, and something doesn't match. Either class sizes are getting really small, or this data doesn't match the, doesn't match the decline in enrollment. You know, I mean, if I was drawing a chart line and put the two against each other and put the enrollment in 2004 against the enrollment in 2010, it's going to be in the range of about 25% difference in decline. But there's no 25% decline in staffing.
Superintendent, do you want to speak to that?
No, it's not. Not at all. I'd like to bring that chart to the board and show them. I'm as curious as you are, but what I wanted to bring up here is for folks that said that we haven't made cuts or adjustments, I've kept on saying that at our peak, we were over 16,000 permanent employees. And that doesn't include our part-time, our bus drivers, food service workers, and others that are included. So I think that this should justify, we have made some significant cuts downward, but we'll overlay it with the enrollment decline as well, as Mr. Beck brings it up.
Well, you can also do it with classified employees as well. You could have the lines, the colored lines have the teaching staff in one, and then as a subset of that would be another color for the classified. And I'm going to, I kind of have a sense that that'll tell us a lot more than this does.
The enrollment declines were from 2002 to 2005.
Steepest ones.
Yeah, those were the really significant, but it's been fairly stable since 2007, maybe even 2006, but 2007, '08, '09, it's been
Which is why we hired.
Which is what our argument was for Prop J, actually. We had the stats, so I'm not sure that that's, not that we couldn't use more teachers.
No.
So we would be including student enrollment data along with staffing?
Right.
Yeah, that would be helpful, see that trend.
Phil, did you want to, did you have anything more on this? Okay. Okay, great, thank you, thank you, Ms. Wissa. Yeah. Okay, we'll now move on to our OE 5, our Personnel Administration, pre-monitoring.
Sandra, back up here.
This is just an update on a previous operational expectation.
Thank you. Back in July, I was able to provide you an update of where we were with regards to the operational expectations. At that time, we had several areas that we were indicating noncompliance. Today, what I would like to do is kind of offer you a progress report of what we have done since that update in July. The first operational expectation that we were deemed ourselves noncompliant in had to do with making sure that we were selecting the most qualified and best-suited staff, making sure that we were striving to have our demographic profile be reflective of the student population, along with making sure that we had an appropriate balance of experienced and inexperienced teachers at the school site. With regards to this OE, we have continued to make progress. We have continued to maintain a 99.4 rate of compliance with highly qualified under the now Elementary Secondary Education Act, which is what we were formally calling the No Child Left Behind. We have continued to make sure that we are advising teachers to maintain that level of compliance. We have reduced the number of employees that we had on what were previously known as emergency credentials, which are now called provisional interim permits and short-term staffing permits. And in 2008, we had 11, last year we cut that by a couple more, this school year we have four. And those four employees have every indication that they will get their full credentials prior to the end of the school year. So that would definitely bring us within zero when it came to that particular objective. In terms of the reason why we continue to deem ourselves noncompliant in this area has to do with that element of making sure and striving that the demographic profile of the student population matches what our staff is. This is also one of those goals that's listed in Vision 2020, making sure that we are paralleling that demographic population. One of the things, one of the elements that we listed on this OE was actually having an annual report by school site that would show what those numbers were looking like, and then be able to indicate whether or not we have made any progress. As you can imagine, this is one of those objectives that has to include human resources along with other stakeholders. There are certain things that human resources will begin to engage in, in the months of November through what we would consider to be their recruitment season. We are targeting our recruitments to pretty much universities that have populations that are graduating, that have a diverse background, but there also are indications that they are preparing a teaching staff or a workforce to work in a very diverse setting. Through those partnerships, we are hoping to be able to increase the pool of candidates for the positions that we have. Our goal would be to provide the hiring manager an opportunity to review a list that includes highly qualified candidates for the assignment, but it also is diverse when it comes to background and ethnicity. One of the things that we would want to do is, even after the selections occur, we want to be able to have conversations with the principals so that we get feedback with regards to, did the pool that we provided, was it quality? Did it match the needs of the school site? Now, I understand from previous feedback that the board is looking not necessarily for that school-to-school match, but certainly, how are we doing overall when it came to the school district? One of the first things that we had to do was actually take a look at a data. We looked at data district-wide, we took a look at it with regards to the different bargaining units. And pretty much depending on the classification, we did see a difference between how we were coming closer to matching that demographic mix of students. But there were some very noticeable areas, the teaching being one of them. Our teaching population is not as closely matched as we would like in terms of this objective. The other is the management ranks. There's also very visible change there. So for that reason, we deemed ourselves noncompliant. What we would want to see is that use this year as our base year, take a look at what our recruitment activities yield, and by the time we come back to you, be able to show you where we have made some gains, and also at that time, share with you the numbers that we were using.
Sandra, can I, can I just ask, before we move on from this category, do you, is it realistic to actually set year-to-year goals around this? So I'm just noticing from your data that, for instance, about 16 and 1/2% of our teachers in the district were certificated non-management. Our Latino, our Latina student population is pretty close to 50%. It's just under 50%.
Correct.
Yeah. So I'm wondering, you know, can we look out five years and set some, you know, specific goals about where we would want to be?
Absolutely. I think that we can engage in very specific activities that would get us closer to those goals, and that's probably be a more realistic measure. And then in terms of what would be success, are we looking at a one percentage, something that would definitely be doable, because in some areas, it is, it's a pretty marked difference of what we would be needing to accomplish. And it would include making sure that we are engaging other people that would help us towards meeting that goal.
Dr. I have an idea about that. First of all, I want to find out how, when San Diego Unified recruiters arrive on high school campuses, how are they treated?
Well, most
What's that?
College campuses?
No, I said San Diego Unified recruiters. The point I'm trying to make is, we are one of the biggest employers in San Diego County, and we are graduating, you know, 10,000, some whatever number of students every year. And what are we doing to grow our own employees from within the district? And when Ms. Burrow was talking about, you know, looking out five years or something, I mean, this is, whether it's jobs that require college or jobs that don't require college, depending on the career choices of the individual, there would certainly be a big issue in juniors and seniors deciding that they want to be teachers. The way to have the teaching population more closely match the population of the student population is just to go to our own student population and go equally, you know, equitably to all the schools and talk about that. I know funds are limited, but I don't know if there would be any way of even identifying or encouraging early on, you know, juniors and seniors who are saying, okay, this is how I performed the district so far, these are my plans to go to college and get a teaching credential. Can we maintain some connection with them over those years with the hope of bringing them back to teach in San Diego Unified? I mean, I know there are a few places in Mera Mesa and other schools I've been to where they have, you know, a large number of students who actually have graduated from those schools, but that takes care of the imbalance.
Definitely. In terms of a strategy
In order to get that done.
We do have Future Educators of America Clubs
Right.
That we start early enough in the middle schools and the high schools, and that has to be a strategy that we maintain throughout. Even, there is the opportunity to get scholarships through the San Diego Foundation, where one of the things that we do monitor is that when these candidates not only get their four-year degree, but actually finish with a credential, we do consider them first for the hiring. So we definitely want to maintain those programs. The other type of information that we're also gathering with regards to growing our own is making sure that we are providing those promotional opportunities for our own employees, and being able to take a look at, can we offer some kind of career ladder where they are going from a classified position all the way to a certificated? Some of it is a matter of reshifting priorities with regards to what's going to get us there faster. Some of it is going to require that we do put some funding behind it, and it just to be a matter of setting those priorities, understanding that the funding will be limited. We've got to target those activities that will give us our best return for our investment. So the Future Educators of America Career Ladder would certainly go a long way to grow our own. When it comes to the intern programs, we want to be able to maintain them as much as we can. And although we might not be able to afford a district intern program, we want to continue those relationships with the university. We do want to become the employer of choice. And to your point, it does start early enough for us to be out there, become recognized as having interest, and we want to take a look at where would be our best opportunities to meet this objective.
And even, I understand in terms of the future teachers, but even in terms of classified employees, how often is it that a student graduates from a high school in San Diego and then the following, and within a few months, they're actually an employee of the San Diego Unified School District as a
It used to be more than it is now. But you didn't mention the Board President Scholarship, but there's a definite way, we started a long time ago, I happened to do it, but there is a definite way where people in the community who want to can actually encourage classified employees to move on into teaching, and that's what that whole Board President Scholarships are wrapped around. And so far, it's done quite well for the almost 20 years it's been in place. And usually now, with the help of our credit unions, we're getting as many as three people a year getting sponsorships to help them get their credentials.
Thank you. In terms of OE 4, administer clear personal rules and procedures. We continue to offer that information through the different avenues. We continue to have employee orientation. We also are utilizing more of the website to post information. The reason we have deemed ourselves noncompliant has to do with our commitment to have surveyed the employees to get the feedback to make sure that we are meeting their needs. We anticipate that once we do some additional trainings, additional orientations, we'll be in a better position to actually gather the information and receive feedback that we would use to make adjustments. Now, in terms of the OE 5.9 and 5.10, both are kind of related. One of them does speak to making sure that the performance evaluation as a tool assists in making sure that we're meeting the board's goals for student achievement. And by the same token, 5.9, making sure that all instructional and administrative personnel are being evaluated. And in terms of an update regarding that particular, those two operational expectations, we are continuously in negotiations with ASD, as you know, we are, we have a tool identified. We will need to continue our conversations with all of the other bargaining units, looking for those opportunities, for those synergies, where we would have an opportunity to create some alignment. In the meantime, we're going to continue to use the instruments that we have, encouraging the managers to use it as a tool to further the goals, what the board has set when it comes to student performance, achievement, and in those regards. The noncompliance has to do that currently the tools that we use for the evaluation are not in direct alignment. And for that reason, we continue to deem it noncompliant, because it would be something that we will continue to strive for. In terms of 5.11, this is where we would be focused on support to develop, mentor, and retain new teachers. We have deemed ourselves in a position where we've had to adjust what we were providing as minimal support for those new employees. One of the things that we did have to adjust for is that, per the Board of Education, we are facing out one of the programs that was the primary tool in supporting new teachers, and that's BITSA. However, one of the things that has happened there, we have been able to maintain at least a minimal level of support, and we are exploring the opportunity to perhaps create a program for the induction, where even if we offer it for pay to our employees, it would still give us one more option for them to pursue their induction. So we would be one of many programs. So we've had to do some adjustment with regards to what originally we had set ourselves for, in terms of just making sure that we're being realistic of what we would be able to provide. It's unfortunate that we did have to pretty much limit how many hours of support we can provide, but it's a matter of utilizing the current resources. One of the things that we would want to do and make sure that we review the data is actually administer the surveys that we have outlined in our document beginning in December, where we would want to assess the feelings of new teachers with regards to support. Do they feel that this is the place they can make a career from? And certainly, use that information to guide our work. In addition to that, in January, we're looking to administer surveys to administrators to receive feedback in terms of the teachers that are working with them and what we can do there in case we are not meeting their expectations. And this is when we'll also be collecting the data. And one of the elements that we wanted to implement this year is actually do some exit interviews. We want to know that if you leave us, what would be some of the reasons you're doing that. So for those reasons, we will continue to list ourselves as noncompliant until those surveys are in place and we have analyzed the data. 5.12, staff members are qualified to perform their responsibilities. One of the things that we continue to do is make sure that applicants are meeting minimum qualifications for their positions, and certainly have provided performance management trainings. We did these in September. We expect to do some more in November, and then again in second semester. However, we also made the commitment that we would be soliciting feedback with regards to those trainings and how we were able to provide the information and supports that managers needed, in addition to getting feedback from our employees. Do they feel they are prepared for the responsibilities of the job they have been hired into? In terms of 5.13, this is a positive work environment, where we want to make sure that we are providing a work environment that's professional, supportive, and with courtesy. Again, this is also an area where we feel that we do have current policies and procedures in place that we would be getting feedback to make sure that we are in compliance with this operational expectation. But also, we are deeming ourselves noncompliant because we have to administer a survey in a timing fashion so that we are getting good data. And we would want to do it at certain times during the year, so for us, it would start in an interval in January. So with the exception on the one in terms of paralleling our staff, what I would expect that we would be presenting to you is results of the different strategies that we might employ, and then be able to work towards meeting that goal. In most of the other ones, by the time you, we come back to you for the monitoring, I would expect that we would have moved from not in compliance to compliance because we would have data to present to you from the different surveys that we would administer. Are there any questions?
All right, so this is, we're just taking action tonight to just approve
With noted exceptions.
With the update, and there are exceptions, okay.
No approval.
Second. I just wanted to comment, and this keeps coming up, but it's very tricky with this, or difficult with this compliant and noncompliant, that's a very black and white as opposed to making adequate progress towards the goals. Because my thinking would be, I think this is, you're doing a very good job of really focusing on what the board has laid out. And my thinking is that when we have an organization that's completely noncompliant, that we would want to set higher goals. We're not just trying to just keep the operation running, but to continue to improve. So that's my problem with just in compliance and noncompliance. But I think you have illustrated very well what you're doing to move towards that.
Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you.
Yeah, great job.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to our consent agenda. I'd like to poll item I-12. Do any other board members want to poll any items on the consent agenda? Now, can we get a motion to approve all the remaining items?
I'm moved to approve the remaining items.
Okay, item I-12. I'm actually going to make a motion to approve this, but I wanted, we had Tad Parsons and Cindy Martin here that wanted to speak to this item, and I'd like to, this is about a partnership with La Maestra Community Clinic and Mid-City Community Clinic and Price Charities to put a health clinic right on the campus of Central Elementary School. And so I'd like to very much thank Tad Parsons and thanks Cindy Martin for coming together and making this happen.
Thank you very much. I might be the first patient there, because I lost my voice.
Yeah.
Good timing. I just wanted to talk about the item tonight and thank Price Charities for helping make this dream come true. You know, the motto at our school is work hard, be kind, dream big, no excuses. And as a principal at Central Elementary, it's my job to ensure academic achievement and to make sure that the classrooms are of the highest quality, the staff is most highly trained, the curriculum is impeccable, the classroom environments are gorgeous, the school's wonderful, and that when children, that the classrooms are ready for children to learn, but it doesn't matter if the children aren't in the seats, if they're not healthy. And so it's my job to ensure all of the well-being academically, you know, it's the cognitive well-being, the emotional, social, emotional, and the physical. And so to partner with Price Family Charities and figure out a way for our children to have access to health care right there on the campus is a really huge miracle. So what we're opening and what the contract that's coming before you tonight is to partner with two FQHCs, which are federally qualified health centers that already exist in City Heights. La Maestra and Mid-City are two health centers that are already there, and they will now be able to provide services right on our campus to all of our children and siblings of our children. And this wouldn't have happened without a huge partnership with Price Charities. We worked with district staff, we use district labor. I learned about all the different trades, and Drew Rollins and his whole team, and all the different trades in the district that made this thing happen before our eyes. I invite all of you to come out and look at it. Look at, there's three exam rooms, there'll be two nurse practitioners and doctors serving children right there at the center. So I know Tad wants to speak as well.
That's pretty cool, huh? It's nice to be here as part of something everybody agrees with. And I do want to thank Board Member DeBak and Board Member Nakamura for their long service to this district. It's been a long haul, and you've both made a lot of sacrifices for children of all walks of life, so thank you very much for all your public service. I did want to thank the district because it's been an exemplary partnership from the superintendent, both deputy superintendents, Drew's job, Bernie's job, the school principal's been phenomenal, all the way down to the plumbers, electricians, painters, guys who laid the floor tile, everybody's been fantastic. We've, we set a very aggressive timeline, we set a very aggressive budget, and we almost got done on time, and we almost got done on budget, but granted, those goals were very difficult to reach and aggressive on purpose. So I'm deeply indebted to district staff and leadership for having the vision and execution to see something wonderful that could happen in a community and make sure it got done. So I really want to commend the superintendent and staff, all from top to bottom, in terms of how this project went forward. Thank you very much. We're very much looking forward to opening the doors and serving, and having every kid at Central, every family at Central having primary care right at the school site. When you talk to parents, you go to the school site and you talk to parents about what this really means in their lives, they start to cry, you start to cry, it's really a wonderful thing, so.
And we don't have any pictures?
I'm sorry?
No pictures?
Well, we'll bring pictures, and you'll, of course, come to the dedication probably in December and January, it'll be very exciting. So thank you again, all the board members and all the staff.
Thank you, Tad. Thank you very much.
Richard, if I could
Yes. Hi, we do have to quote him.
Before you do that, though, I want to thank Tad before he leaves, and the philanthropic focus of Price Charities, because Friday before Halloween, we had a chance to go see 99% completion at Central and then also at Monroe Clark. So really supporting City Heights. Thank you, Tad.
All right, we've got a motion to approve.
Second.
I forgot Tony. Sorry.
Great job, good job, Tad, absolutely.
Okay, all in favor, please. Great, thank you. And that concludes our meeting. Thank you, everybody.